Meeting to order, the School District of Bayfield Board of Education, Monday, March 11th, at 6 o'clock. Lynda, can you do roll call, please?
Nicole Boyd.
Here.
Glenn Carlson.
Here.
Larry Derrigan.
Here.
Sidney Garretti.
Here.
Frank Hopeman.
Here.
Rocky Trivolos.
Here.
And can you confirm the meeting postings?
Yes, I can confirm that the meeting agenda was posted in all the designated locations.
All right. I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
Pledge.
Oh, I skipped the pledge, sorry. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Audience, we have time for any communications written or spoken.
Anybody sign up?
Frankie.
Hi.
Hi.
Good, how many?
Yes, please.
My name is Frankie Flores, and this is Sophie Murphy, and today we would like to propose our senior class trip. So, we're planning to be May 15th and come back May 16th. We're gonna plan on having a walk-in in this ordination, and then going to the Valley Fair. If those dates don't work though, who are we planning on going to 17th through?
No, that's.
Okay.
Sounds like fun. Is...
Oh, that's high school band.
No, is there anything?
No, just the senior class came forward, and Frankie is the president, I believe, and they wanted to just let the board know, let the community know about their senior class trip that's planned, and it's based on the funding that they've raised over the last few years, and they're excited to go.
Yeah, very excited.
Great.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a great time.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, we need to approve the school board minutes of February 11th.
So move.
Motion made by Rocky.
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any discussion, any items of concern?
Did, I mean, I thought one, were I don't wanna put the vouchers?
Lended.
Yeah, I just thought that was...
That's actually correct. You're correct.
You might have seconded it.
No, you did not.
Oh, okay, I would say I don't wanna put my...
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a correction?
So, I'm sure to...
I think you seconded it.
Okay.
The bills got paid though, right? That's a good thing.
Okay, okay. Communication and reports. First item on that list is Shelley and Missy to talk to us about academic achievement.
Remember the E R A teachers that submitted their 2018, 2020 vouchers for classes next year? We had some that was kind of overlapping with our new interim higher ed and our old college prep, and so, teachers have been working on which classes of teachers we'll improve on, so that we're meeting more of the students in the future. Pete Ross, again, working with my math teacher. I mean, came in two weeks ago, met with them. He's coming in Wednesday afternoons to support and give suggestions that also better meet the needs of our math students. I'll be meeting with Dan Robinson and Anselm tomorrow to develop the very, very key funding schedule to move people around who are involved. And academic through the ACT assessment, we have a junior home in the building, so it freed up the teachers and the high school assistants who needed to help with all the operations with the testing. It seemed to be pretty successful, and the students who weren't attending were really cognizant why they weren't here, and I think, of course, when they get their pre-testing, they will have the other team to attend.
All right, thank you.
Packets for you. First thing, if you haven't heard, with our nomination, we were in the paper, Tuesday or Saturday, these papers.
That was perfect, friends. I didn't see it. Good article.
All right, so, in our packet here, in the packet, RTI has met, and we've done our perception surveys and our school-wide information review, that's another way of analyzing where we're at our implementation for academics, and it kind of gives us a big picture of collaboration and leadership along with our academics, K-12. So, we've completed that, and now we're starting to look at the data and the information provided by staff and doing some action planning. So, that's kind of where we're at, and out of that came that top sheet, which is the six-week student progress report, so in the elementary, that was one of the areas we found, we heard a lot of parents saying, well, we just wanna know where our kids are at, and why are they in a Tier Two group? And so, this progress report every six weeks will go home to share just data and information with families, so there's that line of communication we're lacking here.
Great.
The next document you'll find in your folder is something that we've needed for a long time within the district, since I've been here, we haven't had anything. But K-12, this is a nice curriculum review cycle, so looking at our core content areas along with our encore classes, or your music arts and specialty classes, and how they cycle through. So, we have it on a six-year cycle, so you'll see that first year, so next year, looking at having our math committee, if you turn the page in that packet. I've also put together, like, preliminary committees, this isn't set in stone, this is just something that I've developed here, and Shelley and I are just still in the works of reviewing things and just solidifying this process. But, kind of, those are our committees that we're gonna tap into for analyzing and looking at the standards, and looking at piloting curriculum resources, and so on. And that next page, this was a suggestion from Nicole to add an addendum with our current materials, so you'll find in the next two or three pages, the publishers, the series copyright, and which grade levels. Those are our current materials that we're using for math, science, social studies, health. It's not comprehensive yet, I'm still waiting for science in the high schools that are using online textbooks, so that is not on there yet, so I'm waiting just for that link. So, some of this might be updated and changed, but this is just a process and a start. The point of this is to begin aligning our funding and professional development to this process. So, we have, it's more purposeful for our planning each year as we do this planning and purchasing CISA contracts and all of that good stuff, so it aligns well with that. All right. The last thing in your packet is a proposal or a suggestion, like Shelley said, juniors don't come to school for ACT testing. I'm proposing that possibly we do that for K-1, 2, not coming to school on April 11th and 12th, so that our third through fifth grade students can complete the forward exam. And in there, that proposal, it gives the third through fifth grade students the opportunity to know how important the forward exam really is, it gives them that conducive quiet environment that they need, and the availability of staffing to provide that small group time. And it works out that April 11th and 12th is our kindergarten orientation or enrollment days, so our kindergarteners are already not here, so I'm just proposing maybe first and second grade as well not be here, so we can focus on testing those two days. Just a thought, but I would like your blessing to do that and send a letter home immediately so parents can plan. I know it is a change in our community for parents to think about, and just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
I think it's a good idea.
Does that impact the days of attendance with the calendar this year? Would we need to make those up?
Elementary is always over the number of minutes, because it goes by minutes, not necessarily days, and we're always over minutes.
Okay, good.
I would say my...
So, it shouldn't, but I will double check that, just to make sure.
I would say as far as the school board level, we can give the approval to the administration. Work it out with you guys, make it happen. All right, we'll do that.
Okay. All right, any questions on any of the other materials, the curriculum review cycle?
It's so good to see that.
And again, it's a work in progress, we're just starting that, so if you have any suggestions for Shelley and I, just send them our way, and we'll definitely...
It's a good article. Congratulations, everybody.
So, that application is out, I'm just waiting to hear back from DPI. Our first draft had to be submitted March 1st, they edit, they correct the application, it ended up being about 20-page paper, and I should hear how they, they as in DPI, suggestion of how we are doing, because they're, of course, hoping that we get the award as well, so I should know, I'm hoping by the end of the week, because I have to submit the final to the government the end of the month, not like April or March 20th, I mean, something like that, so coming up, it's a quick turn, and we won't know until the fall, so, all right?
Thanks, Miss. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Ron talking to us about the band trip in 2020.
Hi, David.
Hi.
I'll try to, I've got a voice call about two months, so I'll invest in Kenya.
Oh, use the mic, yeah.
I'm not really seeking funding for a trip right now, I'm just seeking for approval to begin the groundwork and fundraising and planning for a U from April, who's made of 2020. That, my outline is in the packet, I like to focus on the first three items on there, such as cost, when, how much deposit, is new for students, and the third item is how we are going to finance the trip, each kid has their own individual band or choir account. Any money they raise goes in their personal account to people in charge. We expect 30 to 40 students who wanna go, I ask them once a week, doesn't wanna go, the homeless fines, so they all look forward on working toward the trip. Like, last time, we raised funds through Kenny Bar sales, raffles, big sales, car washes, larger, we had a gala last time we raised money. And we're trying to do less in the community this time, we have a small community, they are hit pretty hard for fundraising, we're trying to avoid that as much, and put it more on the kids' hands to raise their money for themselves.
When was your last trip, Ron?
It was, uh, six years ago, April.
Sixteen then, or?
Yes, no.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, yes.
Okay, and where did you go then?
New York City.
New York, okay. So, this is just your preliminary?
Yep, just an outline of what we're, we can't do it, narrow down what we can do, always look for cheaper, free things at the John Muir National Forest, some nature experiences in there, we'll do that, get to San Francisco, Alcatraz, and show, which is the one concert, both each.
So, Ron, does the, each student have to raise that $1,679?
Yes, we, um, we do that as a group, pretty much, but I'm encouraging the kids to raise the first 500 bucks on the road. Many of the kids have that money already in the bank account, and my fear is they use that money in the bank account, and the rest is due nothing but, so, it's a forest side of, I'm gonna raise that money, work on the job, put that first deposit, and the rest we raise as a group.
Thanks.
Just kinda give them some life experience of who you're not, whatever happens.
So, the school district doesn't subsidize this trip?
No.
What's the total cost of the trip?
Well, $1,675 per kid, times...
Forty kids?
Fifty grand.
So, when do you need the final, or September?
September.
Yeah. Of this year?
Oh, next, next spring, I guess.
Next spring.
Yes. I've been telling the kids now to work, you know, don't pay that, October 1st, or September 19th.
It's a good opportunity for kids. It's a good opportunity for kids.
Oh, it is.
Yep. We've been doing it here for...
A lot of cultural...
We've been doing it here for how many years?
A lot.
We've been doing it here for many years.
Five years.
Is the parking, Applefest parking part of that?
Yes. And the trip years, we also have, we have concession states during that, Chris, we can, I mean, last, the last trip here, you'd be 14,000 dollars on Applefest. So, we're lucky, and they feel we have that opportunity, doing this money, that way.
Yeah, very capable of that discount.
Yes.
Do we need to approve this, or anything?
Just give an update.
I, I think tonight was more information, but Mr. Borchards, would you think, after the next Applefest in October, you can come back and give another report? Maybe give us an idea of, give the board an idea where they're at?
Okay, move ahead with planning and fundraising, I'm moving forward now, it's a good speech for a, in the school year, and again, sorry, see those benchmarks, see where they're at.
So, final question for me, anyway, so every, so any type of fundraising activity, the board does approve that, that activity, so Randy can then start that whole process? Do you, do you have that completed yet? Is there an account already set up, or does that have to be approved for this trip?
We have that activity account already.
So, you're, we're okay at this point, Randy? We don't have to worry about that? So, you're already set with your account?
Yeah, and then, I keep track myself of all the student, what they've done on the spreadsheet, how much each kid worked, and we keep track of...
So, at this point, there is no board action that needs to be taken, other than you're providing information?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we're gonna table the last item there of LCO.
Yeah, they notified us today that they have a member who's ill, and they want, they wanna come up as a full team to talk to the board, so they'll do that here.
All right, all right. Okay, we'll go on to 8.1.1. Do any members have future agenda items they'd like to put out for us?
No.
No? Okay. 8.1.2, is there a finance committee report?
Finance committee met, and we reviewed vouchers, we considered the proposal from Strandberg, that's in our packet tonight, we considered the MOU between Bayfield School, Ashland School, and MMC, I believe it's also on the agenda, and we looked at some cost for roofing, architect for the school and, and the rec center? And we had a discussion on the budget, which I don't think is on the agenda, but the committee has recommended to have some work groups with those board members and the administration, they would be posted as open meetings, to have some more time and availability to have budget and put in review.
Oh, good.
Prior to it coming to the committee and going to the board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Policy committee, did they meet? There you go.
Yeah, we met. How come I'm on so many committees? We, um, we discussed the high school dual credit program policy to include some of our middle school programming, that's on there tonight also. Again, we reviewed the Strandberg proposal for both policy and finance, and we did have a discussion with some school board reps, or some school representation that was there on the hiring policy and the Neola process, and where we are in that.
Yeah.
And so, we did talk with Jeff to have him connect with Chris regarding a plan to move the Neola policy approvals forward.
So, they're kind of in a, it's, they're kind of being held in a transition process right now, is that how I understand the Neola, and then they have to be moved actually into that formal template in our system? Is that what happens? Yeah? Okay.
We're looking at going back to the communities and doing section, and trying to get to update, like, the 1,000 series, 2,000 series, but we're also looking at putting on a third person.
Yeah.
[laughing].
So, with Stephanie leaving, we're down to two on the policy committee, so...
Oh, boy, okay, okay.
Looking at this side of the table.
Yeah.
You're sitting in that seat there.
Oh, is that why that got changed?
So, we'll have to, um, motion or make a decision on that series.
Well, and then, since the...
We can put that on the...
So, is that a future agenda item? Future agenda item is to add to the policy committee?
But is there consensus? I'm gonna say yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, can we add that tonight, or we got a future?
We can add it on the agenda, but we can have a consensus to move forward, officially it can be done in, in April.
Okay.
Congratulations.
[laughing].
Yeah.
I just wanna revisit the Neola really quick, quickly.
Okay.
So, last summer, the policy committee went through all 400-plus policies of Neola. They met for four nights in July and August. So, what they did is they went through every policy in Neola, and so, the idea was to take that booklet of policies from Neola, and to transfer them over to our policies, and take our old policies out. Now, if there's one or two of our policy, policies we want to stand, we can do that. But where we're at now is, the policy committee will take, say, the 1,000 series and the 2,000 series, it could be like, you know, instruction and, you know, whatever the other policies are in terms of administration, and then, we'll bring those policies to the full board, say in April, we're bringing 1,000, the 1,000 series and the 2,000 series. If you approve that, then the next month they'll meet, we'll go through series 3,000 and 4,000, and in May, we'll bring them forward, and in June, we'll finish up with the last ones. The goal last year was to have this completed by July 1, before we go into next year. So, I will connect with the policy committee, and if we look at meeting before the next policy meeting, we'll set up a meeting to do that for this purpose, and what do you guys think of that?
Just to make it clear, and Glenn, you're gonna have the policy committee before the board meeting for official approval?
Right.
Glenn can be there, but he can't be part of the recommendation board.
Until we officially bring in our board.
Right, but all it is is recommendation committees.
That's all it is, yep. Okay.
Yep.
I'll send out an email on that. Thank you.
Okay, how about the nutrition committee? Have they met since our last board meeting?
The wellness committee.
The wellness committee, sorry, we should change that on the agenda, huh?
Actually, just met today.
Okay.
And had a, had a good meeting, and are going to be, would like to have on the agenda at the next board meeting, a discussion and consideration of possibly hiring a halftime person to coordinate all of the garden activities, including the AmeriPrize person. So, Missy, was there anything else that you thought we should bring up at this point?
That's it. Same position.
Another position beyond AmeriCorps?
Yes.
So, two, we have, okay.
What would be the estimated cost of that?
It was about eight thousand.
It was 12 to 18,000, what they were looking at for halftime, but I think there still needs to be some more, yeah.
And then, which are you looking at?
Yeah, it was the range, 12 to 18,000, so, yeah, it's still a work in progress.
Pretty big garden.
And he gave a draft, um, job description of responsibilities that position would have, which was pretty significant, and it was broken down really great into six categories. They would work in the garden, they would have an educational component in the classrooms, they would work with the kitchen, they would work with third parties, third parties, they would have cultural responsibilities, and working with the larger, bigger communities. It was a pretty comprehensive...
That was from that last month's meet, presentation, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, we asked them to come with the, the sort of...
Good.
Right.
Good.
And the primary focus would be more of a middle school, high school, because AmeriCorps focuses so much on the elementary level, so that would complement the other ends that we're sort of missing on.
Sure, sure.
So, from a procedure standpoint, when we get into the budget, then if we add that in as another halftime FTE, then we would then proceed from there to look at job description and other things, but before we can do that, we have to get it approved in next month's preliminary budget.
So, the general outcome of it would be, I can understand the academics part, but also on the gardening part, that's the help, the kitchen with whole foods, good food, to supplement.
Partly, yeah.
So, that's the income side to the school, we already know the expense side, and academics is income side too, I mean, that's, that's positive, okay?
Okay, so there's a future agenda item for next month.
Have to come out there and raise it. Boy.
Hmm? We have to work on the budget discussion, work it in.
Well, to roll it in, to the budget discussion, have it not be standalone thing.
Right, okay, okay. Okay, 8.2 reports, we have a motion to accept reports, and I believe include, let's include the La Pointe School Committee minutes and the athletic report that you received.
Tonight.
Tonight?
So move. Click it.
And motion to approve, and second, is there any discussion?
I would just like to thank Randy for her detailed reports on potential for upcoming of the, it's a pretty significant campaign that we have, that are very large, and so, the district understands how, how large of impacts we're looking at, particularly health records. And then, also, with my report, there was the information for the RFP that was put on, or was it included in your budget? Um, the RFP for, whoops, no, for the health insurance?
For the trust? No.
Oh.
Yeah, it was additional on top, yeah, right here.
This, this...
The trust, this one?
Right, so, um, CISA is bidding out the contracts right now with WPS insurance, and so, the last meeting, I went to Ashland and bringing a delegation of employees so that they can be involved with the RFP process for that, and so, I was hoping that we could also include employees, so they see what the changes are coming. Some of the things that they were talking about is also, like, now it's, you're looking at wider networks, everybody's covered, well, the trend in healthcare now is going to smaller networks, so that you're funneling your employees to fewer providers, so that those providers get more of your money, kind of thing, so there's a lot of different trends in healthcare that is happening, that I think our employees really should be involved with also. Also, I put, I tweeted what our fund balance is as of right now with the trust fund, we're at a little over 200,000, they want us over, at least over a million, and have to cover that fund balance. So, we know with going to the trust, it was going to be a long-term goal, so once we get those fund balances higher, we can take hits better without having to pass along those high, like, 10% cost increases. So, that's really why we have to start beefing up our fund balance now, so we can even out what we pay in the future.
When is that meeting? Do you have a date? Do you have a date yet for the next?
Um, I don't. There's a timeline, um, similar page I gave you. Is that timeline?
There's a finalist presentation, April 11.
Yep. So that's, so they'll do, they'll do the screening and stuff and then we'll be involved in the finalist presentations. That's where we can start cutting in and listening to those presentations.
That's on April 5th?
Yeah.
The presentations?
Mm-hmm.
So what would be the best plan to get a committee of staff?
I think just see who, you know, decide how we want, you know, which employee groups we want. You know, obviously by the number of teachers should have a bigger group and support staff have, you know, just a percentage of the groups, we have every group covered.
Mm-hmm.
And then also Larry's on the CISA board, so maybe he should be involved too.
You just talked about insurance during the last meeting.
Yep. So just from there, see who's interested and maybe go to the different unit, you know, staff members to see who wants to be part of that.
Will you do that? Will you be doing that?
Okay.
Any other board member wanna be part of it? Because this impacts, I mean, the everyday, every year changes of insurance is catastrophic. It's like this. So, I mean, just so the employees are protected and the school district is protected. You want to spend their money the correct way.
Something you could have a lot of input in.
I'd love to do it.
Yeah, definitely. The more, the merrier, right?
Yeah, but I think that's a good, to see the big picture compared, because you've been here a number of years.
I'd be with Larry.
You and Larry?
Is anybody else on?
No. I'm gonna open the window though. You're not on the wellness committee.
As you guys noticed, I'm on a replacement hat.
Thank you for putting all this together and bringing it to our attention, Randy.
And I thought the fund balances were interesting on that sheet because you have like...
Ashland?
They're gonna be hit hard this year with an increase.
Yeah, they started with an 800,000 deficit and they're projecting to, you know, or I guess they brought it down by 300,000.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of words. So we talked, we talked about budget process and Randy and I would be willing to have any board members work with us, including administrators. And the reason I'm bringing this up, I put it in my report, is that if you have an interest, if we have two board members, it's not a quorum. We can sit in the office and look at things. If there are three of you or more, then we would need to know in advance so we can post that. So is there anyone here that, you know, Randy and I haven't talked at the timing yet. It could be like on a Wednesday at 3:30 or 4 o'clock, if it makes things better for you guys. Is there any, any particular days you're looking at you would like to have it or a time of the day?
Glenn and Rocky.
My calendar's open now, tell them.
Okay.
Into April.
So Glenn and Rocky would be two. If we keep it at two, then?
No, I'll...
Okay, so three, then we will...
All you gotta do is a board, or the, what was I trying to say?
Quorum?
There'll be a quorum present, but no action will be taken.
Yeah, so we'll post out with no action taken. Okay.
Quorum may be present, but no action.
May be present.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
There's a number of things on the budget update that I just wonder, are those things that will be coming forward on our future budgets? From transportation needs and...
Well, this is all preliminary.
Okay.
Yeah, the bigger picture?
Yeah.
That's what we'll show, that's what we're gonna meet on. The group is going to meet on all those, all those items.
Mm-hmm.
And then for the preliminary budget in April, that's what we were bringing forward.
We've got some big, these maintenance issues brought forward about the Bayfield School and the La Pointe School. Those are big conversations.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting the reports?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, financial accounting. Let's do the vouchers.
I will make a motion that we approve the vouchers totaling 491,559 dollars and 16 cents.
So who's got that second? Nicole? Larry did. Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Nicole Boyd?
Yes.
Larry Derrigan?
Yes.
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Cindy Garrity?
Yes.
Frank Puthman? Devin Knaus?
Yes.
Rock and Trigg?
Yes.
All right, we move into general business. 10.1, consider strategic planning proposal from Strandberg and Associates.
All right, finance committee and policy committee met on Thursday. There are three options provided to us from Mr. Strandberg, option one, two, and three. And we, as an administration, as committees, looked at number three, the more comprehensive.
I agree. Motion to approve 15,000.
One second.
Motion made, carried, and seconded. Any discussion on that?
I just have one point that I want to make, which we talked about at the finance meeting. And that was to, to get together with Mr. Strandberg before he starts and try to refocus this on more of a comprehensive plan. Feeling that the strategic plan, the pillars and the primary elements of it are still relevant and still don't need to be, you know, really revisited. But more looking at implementation and exactly what kind of things we're going to do to advance those four pillars.
And I recall doing more of that when Dave Aslan was here, or when we first started this process, a number of the, the last five-year plan. And that, that involved assigning an administrator and a board member to each of those committee, to each of those pillars. Thank you. And then other people could, you know, that, those two people could select anybody else they thought in the district that would be helpful. And then picking, you know, looking at the particular tasks that the board had set forth and figuring out what we needed to do to go forward with those. So I think getting that in place again, so we can actually see, see movement and see us accomplishing things is a really beneficial process to that.
But on number one and two, we kinda have that process in place.
Okay.
To create that and gather input.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. We would need a roll call on this. Linda?
Nicole Boyd?
Yes.
Larry Garrity?
Yes.
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Cindy Garrity?
Yes.
Frank Puthman? Devin Knaus?
Yes.
Rock and Trigg?
Yes.
All right, and we go to 10.2, new business. Consider the education MOU with Bayfield, the Ashland Schools, and MMC. Who wants to talk about that?
So move.
Second?
Nope.
No, Nicole can have that one, Linda.
All right.
Can you have the first?
Rocky.
Can you have the second?
Nicole.
Nicole.
Okay, discussion.
We went through this a lot at the finance committee meeting and I think we're pretty sold on the idea.
It's a good opportunity for a day treatment for children who are really at the tier three beyond our capacity. It's a referral program that parents have an option for, that we now have something beyond our system for kids to go over to Ashland for, for their mental health, physical health they need. And also they'll be provided academic education at the treatment center. And it's, it's insurance-based, so there is no cost to the district. Am I right on that, other than the $85 per day cost? Is there missing?
Yes, that's for the educational services.
Of course, yeah, services.
So the mental health services are paid through third-party billing from insurance. The educational piece is $85.
So where do the referrals come from? From, from your folks?
Yes. Or parents, you know.
Okay.
So it's, just depends. In this case, it was a referral program. It was a dual agreement, we should say. There were parents advocating for more intensive supports that we couldn't necessarily provide. And we went out and said, here are some opportunities within the community that are some resources. And they liked the opportunities.
So is this a fairly new program that's been...
Very new.
Very new, okay.
This is so Ashland received a large grant, I think it's their third year of implementation of designing the program itself, the model, I should say. And they're slowly introducing it to other districts. They piloted at their school last year. This year, it's just offered to K-5 students and they're hoping to expand to middle school and then high school eventually. So they're slowly increasing services.
So is this just for K, is this for just K-5?
Just K-5 right now.
For us? Okay. Okay.
And other area districts. So it's open to, I guess, CISA 12 region schools right now.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
And I have flyers. If you guys want to use this for frequently asked questions, if you want to take some more information.
Thanks.
Okay, we thought to approve that then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Motion to, oh, we got the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.2.2, the high school dual credit policy review and middle school language.
All right.
Motion, well, it's again, yeah. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Nicole and Rocky? Okay, discussion.
I see in a paragraph here that says that students are taking dual credit classes at the high school and are not eligible for federal finances, financial aid. So what does that, what does that mean? I mean, if they take the two, they, they can't apply?
Correct. But you have to be over, you have to be over the school for that. So what we have here, we currently have a policy for kids going to, youth options, where kids go, are never eligible for WIPC or other college. And, and so if you look at the bottom, the credit for middle school students, we started that around three years ago where we brought in algebra to the eighth grade. And so tonight, what we'll do is we'll determine, or your, your motion will allow the students who are taking algebra in eighth grade, what, that, the grade they receive will count towards their GPA when they get into high school. So if they get an A or a B, whatever that is, in eighth grade, that will count towards their GPA as a intern to high school. And it'll also count as a math credit. So that's a good thing, allowing eighth graders to do that. And up on top, you'll see dual credit. And this is new this year. It says one semester equals .5. And we talked about this at the policy meeting the other night, equals three credits. Well, currently under the youth options program, it's, if you take three credits at, at the college level, you'll get one credit at the Bayfield School. So up there on top, if you see on the top of your page, it says .5. I talked to Dan Livingston today and at the policy meeting on Thursday, we wanted to make that correction. And it should say one, one Bayfield High School equals, credit equals three college credits. So that, that would be, we would clear that up, get approval tonight, so.
So it'd be the same then?
It'd be the same. We want to make it universal, same. This is a voluntary program? See, like this.
All right, you ready to...
And also that the district pays only for kids that enroll and they repay a, they pay a reduced amount to the college. Because otherwise, the college doesn't pay for the instructor, but they get paid for the kids to enroll and the district pays for the instructor. So the kids are getting a high school credit and a college credit, but the district is paying a reduced rate to the college.
Okay.
And then for the really college credit program, district is going to have a state for any kids up here.
How come it wouldn't be the same then for your credit?
Because it's taught here at our school. They have to actually be taught outside of the district, not by a teacher of the district.
Okay.
I would ask for that motion, if we could just clear the, change the .5 to 1.
Is there a motion yet on the table?
Yep.
Why are we changing that to 1? Because we had a meeting where we decided on a half a credit.
Mr. Livingston informed me today in our policy committee that met last Thursday, we want to make it universal, 3 to 1.
Understanding why it's different than an off-campus course. If it's a college course, it's a college course.
We met as, there was four of us that met as staff. And we talked about the rigors difference, our requirement when they go to the Northland, it might be a one or two-hour lecture, but they have three to six hours of homework. Where here, it's 42-minute class period, five days a week. And we adopt, we looked at several schools, Joe Credit, and that was what they had on theirs.
And Dan was there?
And what is happening now is we'll have kids graduating early, which is great for them, but then we're gonna have to look at our FTEs, we won't need...
But we discussed that too. We did discuss that. But we're not seeing a lot of students enrolling in this program right now. I think there was four last semester, all of the high school. So I'm just bringing forward what we discussed at the policy committee and what Mr. Livingston brought forward. So we want to make it universal across 3 to 1.
Well, I'd like to move that we table this for further discussion by the administrative team.
Since there seems to be a little bit of...
Yeah, there's a little confusion, so I'd move to table it.
Then we're gonna have to rescind the first motion to bring it to discussion.
We didn't vote on the first motion.
We didn't vote, we just had, it just has in discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was in discussion, but we had a motion to accept it.
So we have to rescind that motion?
Well, no, a motion to table supersedes the original motion.
We're gonna rescind the past motion and second first, then re-vote. Because during discussion, it brought out in the light.
Sure.
I think I made the motion. I rescind the motion.
Rescind my second. Second to table.
No, we're gonna go all in favor to rescind the motion.
All in favor to rescind the first motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New motion.
I move to table.
Motion is on to table, sir, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you provide some prior ratings from that group?
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have 10.3.3, our roofing, RFP, architect.
Before I make a motion to table, I'd like to ask the board, and the reason I'm gonna make the motion is that reading this, there's conflicting information back and forth. This is not apples to apples. And I'd like to ask the board, just give me the liberty to talk to Rosina and to CNS Design to clarify some things, because they're not apples to apples.
Has Dave been involved?
And if we need, and if we need to expedite this, we can have a quick meeting prior to the next board meeting.
Absolutely.
And then I'd like to say that, once they talk with them, there's always an opportunity that we can select some services, but when we go to bid, you can do the design bid. Design build, that means the contractor has the ability to do the designing himself and bid the project as a whole. But this opens the door for other contractors to bid it too. But you give other contractors, like you take the Myrns or this custom foam or whatever, they have the abilities to do their own design. But you have to advertise it as such, design build. We can put it in there and say, once I get this, their language together to find out what the cost is gonna be to the district on apples to apples, then when you go to advertisement, I'll tell both of them, we may do this, I can't speak for the board, but to offer bidding as contractors, as roughers only, and design build contractors also. but to offer bidding as contractors, as roughers only, and design build contractors also. So I'd make a motion to table.
They can't do anything right now because of the snow?
Second.
Motion to table, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And I'll get back with David and Jeff next week.
All right. Ten point two point four, two thousand eighteen nineteen, school calendar.
All right, many snow days this year so far, there's six of them, I guess, so far. So what we did is we revised this year's current calendar. And we made the changes to be applicable to how many minutes we need for our students for a full year. And this calendar has those changes, if you look in April, the fifth and the nineteenth, those are full days. Look to the right side of it. And then, let's see, full day on June seventh. In the yellow, I'd say. So that, this is for the completion of this year. However, there's another storm coming in, I just, I don't know if you've looked at the weather lately. There's a major storm coming in right now through the Rockies, in the plains, it'll be there.
That's rain.
Is that the rain that's coming?
Tuesday through Thursday.
Yeah.
We could get up doing inter rain.
We're on that cutoff for sleep and everything else.
Oh, my gosh.
So who knows, but this is the current, you know, revision.
And also updating five minutes per day rate?
Yeah, started on March eighteenth, we're going to, we're going to add five minutes in the morning to the schedule. And I do want to say this, Mr. Iverson's in the audience tonight, and if you've noticed, Mr. Iverson, the BEA president, he's been present for a lot of meetings. He's been, we appreciate him coming to the policy meeting, we appreciate him coming to the finance meeting. And we did a survey to all of our teachers and staff on these revisions, particularly on April nineteenth, that's Good Friday. And we surveyed all of our staff members, and the majority of individuals wanted that day off versus adding it on at the end of the year. So we are communicating with our staff, we're trying to be transparent, and I know Eric is involved in all that stuff, so. This is the current revision, we'd like to have motion tonight for the remainder of the school year, this year.
And for the rest of the school year, adding that six minutes in the morning?
Yes. March eighteen.
And then you're still in the process of determining whether you'd add back April nineteenth or add June tenth?
Nope, that's already decided, yep.
An addition.
April nineteenth is decided tonight, yep, that's on there tonight. We will have school on the nineteenth beyond.
Okay, so are there teachers who will be expected to cancel travel plans, or what is that?
No, what we did is talking to the BEA, they're going to work with their supervisors, which is, you know, Shelley, Missy, and Randy. And if there's pre-arranged trips, we're going to try to accommodate with substitute teachers, we're going to try to accommodate within the building. But it is a workday.
And they would then have to take a holiday day or a vacation day?
They would still take their personal, yeah.
So it wouldn't be a freebie?
No, no. Is that correct? That's all right, Eric?
Personally, they're not paying, they don't pay.
Personally, right.
Yeah, or no.
I guess not holiday.
Not a holiday, it's a workday.
So the next snow day, we'd have to add on another five minutes in the beginning of the day, or add on at the end of the year. We have no other choices beyond that right now.
Wow. Okay, is there a motion regarding this action for the school calendar of two thousand eighteen nineteen?
May be subject to change, but motion approved.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Ten point two point five, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, school calendar.
So what I'd like to do is open this one up to Shelley and Missy. Shelley was the coordinator working with staff on this calendar. This is a proposed calendar for the next school year.
So looking at it, the yellow highlighted, there are eight in-service days, that would, one hundred and seventy-eight student days, with eight in-service days would equal one hundred and thirty-six contract days that we still have. We did ask as administrators that they take the full week of November off, which is a series of the attendance issues we had on the Monday, Tuesday. We also asked for October fourth as a full day of no students, because of typically Thursdays to risk ban at the carnival, and the kids, we had a high attendance issue on the fourth because of the local community activities happening late into Thursday nights, so that was common. We did add in three extra early release days. We have the four that are still the end of quarters, so teachers have the afternoon for professional prep, they're giving report cards done. But then we found a lot of value in having two O or in-services that are relatable to the teacher's situation, whether it's SLO, or what have you, whatever we're working on, so we added three early release in-service days as well. I believe the only change, the teachers that we have, from the teachers' change in the January sixth in-service day to January twentieth. By the way, a lot of that, this was decreed by the committee and then voted on by the BEA.
Did you put the weather forecast in there too?
There'll be no snow days next year.
I do want to highlight one area on here that's, that's going to be, there's two areas I wanted to highlight here. First of all, Shelley.
Forecast.
BEA, Eric, we all agree to this one, correct, everyone was involved. So there's just two areas that are different. The first one for Applefest weekend, the students won't be here on the fourth or the seventh, the Friday, Monday. And the reason for that is, in the past, that Friday has been one heck of a day. There are kids and staff in and out of the building, it's not very productive, it's just not a good instructional day. So they're making good judgment by not having kids here on that Friday. And on Monday, traditionally, the kids were not here, we always had staff come in, the staff will be here for an in-service day. So that will be one change. And I think that's good, I think from an instruction standpoint, an academic standpoint, we want kids that are going to be here fully invested, without working on the stand in Bayfield.
Well.
And the second one would be November for Thanksgiving. We used to have, well, not used to, just the last couple of years, we have staff here on that Monday, Tuesday for in-service. This, this schedule, they won't be here, there, there won't be anybody here that week, except for admin. And Randy raised her hand, and Chris, you know. But again, you know, if you look at that, that's two days of in-service for, for staff development. Lot of staff members are on vacation, they're out of the building, so again, not very productive, so let's make it productive, so nobody will be in that week.
And end time of the?
That's Thanksgiving week, right?
Yep, Thanksgiving.
The start and end time?
Yeah.
Holy week, year season.
Yeah, so, so those would be the two critical changes that are different.
The start and end time stays the same, so it gives us the three days, emergency days or snow days, and we still need the minutes.
All right, is there a motion to approve this calendar? Rocky, oh, Eric, yes.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
You guys coming back on January third, that Friday, and I'm wondering, you know, how many people are going to be wanting to come back for that third? No, but I just wondered, how many students or staff, I mean, the staff will be here, but I'm just wondering about the?
That's an in-service day, Eric?
That is an in-service, okay, so.
Only staff.
Yep.
Does that fit your needs?
So this run by all your teachers too, this calendar year? Or is this something that, because it seems to me like in the past, there used to be three, two or three options.
They had four options to start.
Pardon me?
They did have four options to start with, and then they voted down.
Well, this is it today.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that a second?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion or comments? All those in favor? All those, any proposed? Motion carries. Ten point two point six, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, CISA twelve, shared services contract renewal.
So admin met today, administrators met today, and these are the services we acquire yearly from CISA. Very similar to the, to the past years. We did add on physical therapy next fall, we added on for the full year. And if there's another vendor out there in the future that comes forward, then we'll, we'll look at it. But right now, what we want to do is just make sure we have it on the budget for next year for the whole year.
That we're covered.
That we're covered. The admin here, Randy, was there anything that you wanted to discuss about the CISA contract, or?
I just, they didn't give us a total for the PT for next year, so I just kind of looked at previous years, things had a happier, so I put fifty-eight thousand, I think that was pretty safe for us.
I thought last, last time we discussed this physical.
That's what you brought up, it was pretty pricey.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, that's prior to that, canceling the, the thing with Redcliffe, but.
Postponing.
Postponing, right, postponing. Because I understand that Redcliffe is in the process of trying to hire another physical therapist. So I guess, this is a definite, I mean, even if we prove this is not a definite thing, we can, well, what about?
It's a contract, so I think it is.
Yeah, so there's a couple ways we can, I called Ken Kozinski today. And so, you know, we could look at a six-month price, and then if Rekta comes through in the summertime or the fall and says they've hired somebody, that's, then that's, there's something there we can go on. But our concern at the, at the admin level was, we, we were anticipating them doing it, but they haven't hired anybody yet, I don't believe. But when they do, and they come forward, then we can definitely talk about it. But right now, we need to really focus on.
That might happen for, you know, the following year. Because we make an investment, we got guidelines to follow, federal laws to follow.
I understand that.
And we got to fulfill that obligation first, I agree with you. But just because somebody is trying to get up and running, that's not an insurance policy for this district. CISA also has to look at hiring somebody, and they have an investment.
No, they got somebody hired already.
Well, yeah, but not dedicated, not dedicated a hundred percent, Larry, to the school that's in Bayfield.
The point is this. I just want to make a point, that we tabled that for a reason, because we were anticipating something happening, and if it did happen, we would have that opportunity to enter into that. Now, if you enter into this for six months, then we're going to be stuck with it for six months. We're into it now for thirty-five thousand dollars, and we're not going to get six-month service on it, what the hell's six-month service going to look like?
I'm going to have to redirect here, we discussed some of this, that was an executive.
Correct.
Well, no, when we came out of the executive, we talked about this.
I know, but what we talked about, as far as the process.
Well, I just know my feelings, that's it, you guys, which one?
We got to be, I make a motion that we accept it. Then we can discuss it. But keep out the, keep out the part that, I think we all know, we discussed an executive. We made motions as we come out, and the motion was made that we postponed with Redcliffe.
Yeah, I was there.
No, I know, we all were. I make a motion to accept.
Do you have a second?
Oh.
I'm just wondering about the new services.
Where do you, where are you seeing the new ones?
Paige, I don't know, I think she's taking help at schools for establishing a TSS leadership team with coaching support, what is that?
I'm sorry, where are you at, not the one, the trauma-sensitive, that's a trauma-sensitive support, so it's, I'm trying to figure out which one you want.
Is what theme is it on?
It's on five.
Theme five.
I agree with you.
Oh, theme five.
I know.
The trauma-sensitive schools, whole approach, so we've started doing?
No, the first one first, see it?
Establishing a TSS leadership team.
The one up?
Third one.
Um, the three thousand was a four-day, um, trauma-sensitive leadership team. So it's four days of support from a CISA twelve leader, coming in to work with a leadership team within the district.
Okay.
On training staff, training trainers essentially. So they're coming in and training a leadership team to then, that leadership team trains staff.
And is that different than the one near the bottom, where it says just trauma-sensitive schools awareness training, and that's the five hundred dollars?
Yes, so each of those new travel ones were a little different, we felt like we've already covered the awareness training.
Okay.
Um, so we felt the next best step was that whole school approach, bringing bus drivers, subs.
Yep.
Others in that weren't necessarily trained during our reading service time.
Okay. Does that make sense, and that's the cost for all staff training?
No, that's for the leadership team.
The leadership team.
And they're going to pull that through.
Plan?
Yep.
Any other leadership teams that we need?
So does that get paid by the school safety grant, or?
No.
And the school psychologist is on there because, or is he not, oh, you did not select it, okay.
We have that.
Okay. Important to look all the way to the right, right?
As an administrative team, it works really well, we sit down together and go over it line by line, what, you know, we need, what services we need. So it's really, we do our due diligence to really look at the service that we get through system.
But what you're looking at right now is just this amount to build into a budget. We're not really going to accept the budget until October.
Right.
But for CISA's part, they got to create their budget too.
Exactly, and their staff.
And what's their timeframe on the budget?
Their staff?
For their creation of it, probably July.
Well, they do not renewals in same, probably the same sequence we do.
They want our signature right at the one.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that.
But you're right, he's preparing his budget too.
Right, but he's on the same timeframe as we are.
Right, so this is a project, projected.
Now, if I was in Ken's position, I'd be looking at way early too. Because he's income sourcing. So what I'm getting at is that, do we really have to approve this tonight, or do we have another month to go over, make some phone calls, verify what physical therapy really is going to be?
We pushed it out for a month last year because of the same thing.
I actually talked to Mr. Kozinski today, Ken.
Okay.
But I have to message for him with that, with that idea, that we bring it to the board tonight. And if the board had any questions to move it into April, would he have any concerns about that? He said no, that would be fine. If there's any questions on what we came up with.
Because right now, estimated cost is a hundred and eighteen thousand, but we don't know what physical therapy is for sure.
Right.
Right.
And we, we won't know, the problem, and I was saying to the admin team today, is unfortunately, we don't have hard fast numbers, they fluctuate. So that's the difference. I know we currently have five new referrals that will be coming in. The likelihood of those kiddos needing PT services are pretty good. So will that number increase? Possibly, it just depends, you know, so.
And it increases as we need it every year anyway, that's not a hard fast number, it's based on our actual, yeah, it's based on our actual, you know, cost.
We'll have a better sense, but you're not, even if we contact CISA the next month, those referrals aren't going to be done to get a better number. And that's five, so you've already asked me.
We just approved, we just approved fifty-eight thousand dollars, and we had to take out a fund balance to satisfy physical therapy. And I got added to CISA, I understand that. But to fine tune this a little closer, and I understand, you got to build a budget, they got to build a budget. Ours is expenses, ours is income.
And we just really can't afford to get behind in providing our physical therapy services, like, you know, what happened this year.
No, absolutely not.
So we need to have, that's, I mean, legally, we have to have that covered. And I hope to see something coming from Redcliffe's program so that, but, but we need to see that that's going to be a solid system.
Will they give us anywhere?
In place.
Will they be able to tell us for sure?
Right.
And will they hire somebody?
I don't, you know, I, I'm sure there has been no contact since they suspended the contract, so I guess I don't know. I don't know if it's up to me to go there and talk to them.
No.
No.
I don't think so.
What I can do is I can call Mr. Kuzinski, Ken, this week, and set up a meeting with him to talk primarily about physical therapy, and, you know, bring something back to the board on that whole.
Can you get any word from Redcliffe about their process, or where they're at?
We need confirmation. We know CISA's gonna deliver.
Yeah. I, yeah, I look at two options. Number one, you know, we have a six-month budget for CISA, and with the idea that Redcliffe may come through in summer or fall for next January.
Mm-hmm.
Anything beyond next January, then it's a full year. Because that, the six months would be in January.
Yeah.
It'd be July one through January, that'd be six months. So, or we just, part of me, part of me doesn't want to, we've had that conversation before, in my opinion, Redcliffe will come forward when they're ready, and then we can make that sound decision with the admin team. I, you know, but, but from a budget perspective, you know, like Ms. Geisregan, you know, she, they struggled back in the fall, we struggled, you know, from a compliance perspective. And if we can just approve it for the year, and then have Redcliffe come forward, and let us know when their target time is, when they have the capacity to put something forward, I think it's, I think it's better for all of us, including them.
Jeff, what is the time period for what we're looking at right now for CISA? Would it run that fifty-eight thousand, does that run through December thirty-first?
That was for the whole year.
For the whole year.
No.
The school year, okay, not the calendar.
Two thousand nineteen, twenty.
September through June.
And so what, what your suggestion would be is that we talk to them about essentially cutting that in half?
You know, I, we worked with Ken for many years, and if he would allow us to have that leniency, you know, and if we went to him in October and said we could be up and running in January, you know, but again, Rocky said it earlier, Ken has to hire somebody for this position for the whole year, and he has a budget for the whole year, and that worker is in mind for the whole year. And that's the dilemma we're in, and we're putting them in the bind too.
You know, during this discussion, we gotta look at and vote on what's reality. We need a physical therapist, we need it for nineteen, twenty-year school year. Redcliffe, they get up and running, and I guess, I just stand on why I'm making, when I made the motion, allowed to have the discussion, but stay with CISA for nineteen, twenty school year, and when Redcliffe gets up and running, that's a twenty, twenty-one school year. And I have no problem with that.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just conclude by this. I know that, and I could probably use some help from Missy on this, when they hire a new PT therapist, and they're not DPI certified, that's a process they're gonna have to learn. And the idea that they'd have to learn that quickly, we ran into that problem last year, let's let them build their capacity and get them ready for the full year.
I'm willing to give Redcliffe opportunity all day long, because I think they have a very good health facility, they're, you know, groin pains, everything else, and the physical therapy, whatever else, you know, therapies they have. But I stand firm in this call for the question.
Okay.
So this is to sign those contracts basically?
We have a motion and a second to approve the CISA contract. All those in favor? Seventy-five percent aye?
Roll call.
Is there any, any? Oh, sorry. Roll call vote.
Nicole Boyd, yes. Larry Derrigan?
Yes.
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Cindy Garrity?
Yes.
Duck Knop?
Yes.
Rocky Trubisky?
Yes.
All right. We now are ready to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five.
I will agree to adjourn to executive session.
Is that a roll call vote too?